Welcome to the Board of Education's January 12, 2023 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Owen. A Policy Review meeting will be held on Friday, January 20 at 9:00 a.m. in this boardroom. Also, a Naming Facilities Committee meeting to consider the nomination of the name and mascot for a new Northwest Sector Elementary School will be held on Friday, January 20 at 11:15, also in this boardroom. I also want to remind everyone that Knox County Schools will be closed on Monday, January 16 in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And also note to everyone in attendance that the Board of Education's public meetings are our only opportunity that we have as a board to discuss items that come before us. We are very glad you chose to attend tonight, but please refrain from applause, cheers, groans, booing, and/or conversations with others in the audiences. This can be very distracting. If you feel the need to have a discussion with someone sitting next to you, please step outside to do so. Any Knox County resident can sign up to address the board during public forums, so please be respectful of this. And board members, I wanted to note the updates to tonight's meeting agenda following our Monday work session. An updated revised version of Board Policy I-450 has been attached as Version 2 to the Item 7E. Items 9A and 10A were withdrawn, and a draft of our 2023 Legislative Priorities has been attached to Item 10H. Are there any other requested changes to this agenda? So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have some special recognitions tonight. I believe, Ms. Nixon, are you doing this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ryswick and KCS staff, and all others in attendance here tonight. It's an honor to be here to recognize Knox County Schools' first cohort of leading innovators of instructional technology, also known as LIIT Light, taking the light into the world. In 2022, the district began our first LIGHT cohort. The process involved an application as well as recommendations. A number of applicants applied, and this team of educators you see here tonight, all in their gray, were selected. They represent a diversity of roles within our district. Included in this group is an administrator, an instructional coach, a library media specialist, and teachers from across a variety of disciplines. They committed to, one, engage in growth and leadership that impact student success, and, two, to share and model best practices using technology to maximize teaching and learning at their schools and across the district. This group spent the calendar year from January to December both learning and networking with each other. As we have learned, we are better together. The main goal of the LIGHT group is to gain a deeper understanding of technology integration in our district and how this will ultimately impact our students. In addition, members of the LIGHT 22 cohort have been able to support our district by serving on our interactive display panel vendor review team, offer feedback on the student access to technology section of our district LEA plan, and various other opportunities in their classroom, at the school, and the district level. When this cohort was asked to give advice to future LIGHT groups, two members made statements that I would like to share tonight. Katie Wymer from Carter High said, "Change starts at a personal level, technological and otherwise. If our goal is to be leaders and agents of change, that starts with us." Rebecca Layton from Carnes Middle said, "Being a part of the LIGHT group is a great opportunity to connect and learn with other passionate educators. Use the inspiration you gain from the meetings to grow and help others in your school." At this time, I would like to recognize the LIGHT 22 cohort. We will start with our first representative from Pond Gap Elementary, Jessica Seaton. And then from Norwood Elementary School, Kelly Bowling. Next, Rebecca Layton from Carnes Middle School. From District 8, Katie Wymer, Carter High School. From Gibbs High School, Nikki Blaylock. And we have one member, Danielle English from Holston Middle, who could not be with us this evening, but we will make sure she gets the certificate. Thank you. From Bonnycade Elementary, Lauren Fevrié. Melody Wagstaff from our KCS Virtual Middle School. Jessica Maynard from South Knox Elementary. From South Doyle High School, Andrew Foles. And finally, Sheri Ammons from South Doyle Middle. Sheri, stay here. We're going to call everybody back out to do one big group picture real quick. these educators tonight. We look forward to starting our next cohort of 2023 in a few weeks, so if anybody wants to come join us, let me know, and we'll be continuing our journey of learning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving into our regular agenda items, Ms. Cottney. Item Six, Consent Agenda. Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor, or any discussion, sorry. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A-120, School Attendance Areas as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-190, Media Relations as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-240, School Board Legislative Involvement as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C-230, Bus Photograph, Video Retention and Viewing as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-450, Public Charter Schools as amended.
I need to approve the second version foregoing a second reading.
Okay, so we have a motion. So, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen, Mr. DuPler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to explain the second version, just so everybody's on the same page. I went back after Monday night and, based upon Mr. Watson's comments, basically took, what is it, the second page where it lists the committee, and basically restored that to the same type of language that was in the original policy. That was basically because, well, for two reasons. One, Mr. Watson had a concern about that, and frankly, what I was doing in that area was just stating what the law was. If this board wants to go beyond the law, that's fine. If this board wants to do less than the law, then that's where we have a problem. So, that's why I went back and just tried to restore basically the same language in there, and then, of course, this board can go and, with policy review, and change this policy however it sees fit. But my main goal here is to have the areas that are redlined in the second version passed so that this board will have an entirely up-to-date and legal policy as we go into the charter review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DuPler. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. DuPler. So, the reason I appreciate you making the changes to, or removing the requested changes to that particular section of the policy is, in our meeting in December, I think that's where the bulk of our conversation was. I'm not necessarily thinking that the original language was the best language, but that's the particular language that I would like to discuss in policy review, and then there may be other revisions later, so, thank you.
All right. So, the motion, just correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Watson, was to approve Version Two on the first reading, and the second was by Ms. Owen. Correct? Okay, any other, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I mean, I'm really fine either way, but I'll just say that I would prefer the language that says "may" because, and I think the state says that you have to have five people on a review committee. I think this is almost double that, so it's just a lot of people to have to have on a committee for something that is quite a lot of work, to go through applications that are so numerous and, you know, such a large application. So, but, really, whatever the will of the board is, I'll just tell you that, based on the conversation that I've had with Julie Thompson, who has spent a lot of time in charter review meetings and that kind of thing, that is my concern, based on the conversation that I had with her about the review process.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the committee for this year has already been set and we've already voted on it, can we save shall for future look?
So, you're saying vote on...
I'm saying vote on the version that we have on the agenda.
The second version?
Yes, and then discuss the may, shall, in policy review.
And may, and possibly change it. Yeah, that's fine, because, I mean, it doesn't matter for this, like you said, we already have the committee for right now.
I think if we discuss those other changes, then that would...
Okay.
And that way, we won't do it three times.
Yeah, that's fair. Mr. DuPler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I was just going to say that was the intent on the second version, was that the board can come back at policy review, or even a later date, and make whatever changes the board sees fit, just trying to get the board in compliance for this particular review. Yeah.
So, we have a motion on, to approve Version Two on first reading by Mr. Watson, and a second by Ms. Owen. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approved fiscal year 2023 budget overviews for Tennessee Department of Education S.R. 2.0 and S.R. 3.0 grants.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved Tennessee Department of Education Tennessee Accelerating Literacy and Learning Corpse grant in the amount of $2,757,300.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Higher Education Commission for the term of January 15, 2023, through December 31, 2024, for a supporting post-secondary access in rural communities grant in the amount of $95,158.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities for the term of January 1, 2023, through June 30, 2023, for grant funding in the amount of $2,500 for West Hills Elementary School.
So, motion by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approved grant agreement with the National Education Association Foundation for the term of November 15, 2022, through November 15, 2023, for grant funding in the amount of $1,941 for the Knox County Schools Social Studies Department.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approved grant agreement with the National Education Association Foundation for the term of November 15, 2022, through November 15, 2023, for grant funding in the amount of $4,412 for the Harden Valley Academy.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8G, approved Walmart community grant in the amount of $500 for Cedar Bluff Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8H, approved Tennessee Foundation for Agriculture in the Classroom Grant in the amount of $500 for Farragut High School.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8I, approved Keep Knox So Beautiful Community Beautification Grant in the amount of $3,900 for Fulton High School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8J, approved Nishwongar Foundation AP Access for All Mini Grants in the total amount of $1,780.49 for Karnes and West High Schools.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Pike. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8K, approved receipt of Knox County Government Grant in the amount of $10,000 with required matching funds in the amount of $10,000, and contract with Tim's Fencing for upgrade of Gibbs High School softball field fencing.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9A was withdrawn. 9B, approved contract with Duncan &amp; Sons Building Maintenance LLC for janitorial services at 17 Knox County Schools for the term of February 1, 2023, through June 30, 2023, at a cost of $1,040,000.
So, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Mr. Triplet. And before we get into discussion on this, after having a conversation with a community member after Monday's meeting, I would just like to take a moment to clarify for the public and for the record that this board does oversee the budget, right? So, when we talk about salary schedules and pay, you know, and I do believe we've all committed, and I do appreciate you bringing up the comment about the salary schedule at Monday night, Mr. Watson, that we're talking about ourselves. I mean, you know, we did approve this budget, and it was approved unanimously, and I think there might be a little bit of confusion out there in the public about that, so I just wanted to go on the record and, just as a reminder, that, you know, this is one of our duties as a board, so overseeing the budget. So, let's see. That being said, Ms. Owen, I believe you are first up.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. In thinking about this since Monday and how we're talking about it, it occurs to me that what we're doing with this grant, or with this contract, is solving the wrong problem. It's like when you have a word problem in math, and you solve it and you do it correctly, but it's not the problem that the question was asking. The problem that we have is with attracting and retaining custodial staff. The result of that problem is the cleanliness of schools, but the problem that we have is attracting and retaining those employees, and we are not currently doing anything to solve that problem. So, I think it's important that we look at what this contract really does. This is a very expensive Band-Aid for a very short amount of time that doesn't solve the real problem. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, I agree, I don't think it's solving the ultimate problem. I think sometimes when you have problems, there's short-term Band-Aid solutions, and I would call this that, and then there's also the longer-term...
I couldn't find Band-Aid solutions here.
Do y'all feel like Siri's just always listening to you? I was speaking to Ms. Himmelgarn today, and it's the same thing on our phone call. Siri responded. So, anyway, so, I'm not, okay, so where was I in that? So, but, yes, Band-Aids, yes, but then there's obviously the more systemic challenges that we have, and I think that's ultimately what we're facing, because the challenge that we're facing with our custodians is not something that is reflective of even just this year. I mean, we've been at a deficit in this for a long time. And so, Ms. Himmelgarn, would you speak a little bit to kind of the current work that we're doing to try to help rectify some of this, but then also if you can speak to some of the things that you all are planning on doing? And then ultimately, what I would ask, because I think this is a Band-Aid solution, I think it would be important for this, for Central Office, for Dr. Ryswick, for you and the team to report back to the board, maybe in the next three months or something, and say, hey, here's how it's going with Duncan &amp; Sons, and here's the other things we're doing, and here's the results we're seeing. You know, did we close the gap by 20 positions in the next three months? I don't know. Maybe we will, right? But I think because of the nature of this, it would be good to kind of get a report out, but I would love to hear from Ms. Himmelgarn in terms of kind of what we're currently doing and kind of what's on the table. I mean, you all know this is a problem, right? So, yeah, what's the plan?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, members of the board, there are several things that we're doing, both work that we have already been doing and will continue, a few things that have stemmed from the meeting on Monday night, some things that were brought up at the meeting. So, one item that was noted was the 1008 starting salary for custodians specifically versus the 1089. That was an error on our MUNIS site, and we've corrected that. We had, the team had already started reviewing the application process and will continue to do so. We do have the same application currently for all staff members, so we're viewing to see if there are, if it makes sense to have different applications for different categories of job postings to make that a little bit less burdensome. We will continue to review and bring proposals in the budget discussions. There was a conversation on Monday about the salary study, which would produce potential recommendations for FY '25. That does not mean that we're not going to take any action or make any proposals with FY '24. It means that we may not make sweeping changes to our salary schedule, but it doesn't mean that we wouldn't propose percentage increases for next year or other type of increases. I will let Mr. Mosman, Alex Mosman, our Executive Director of Talent Acquisition, is here tonight, too, and I will let him share with you all some things that the talent team is doing in addition to those items.
Madam Chair, members of the board, so I'll just, I'll echo what Ms. Himmelgarn had already shared and acknowledged, I think, the challenge that we're all facing just in terms of recruiting and retaining talent across the district. I don't know that KCS is unique in the labor market in terms of our ability to recruit and retain talent in this present moment, and what we know, and I think several of you have rightly pointed out, is one of the fundamental and sort of technical challenges that we are working through is how do we make it easier for folks to raise their hand and say, "I want to work for KCS," and then how do we take that process and make sure that we're connecting folks to the right hiring manager and getting them into the right role? And so, we have a quick interest form that we've been using... And so, we have a quick interest form that we've been using, kind of piloting for a while now, to make sure that folks can, from a mobile device, express interest that can go to a member of the talent acquisition team, and then we can work to make sure that we get that person plugged into the right hiring manager. That's something that gets applicable across all roles, because we know that recruiting custodians is fundamentally at the same time, the same process as it would potentially be for recruiting teachers or other certified staff as well. So, that's one sort of technical fix that we're working through to try to make sure that we are, again, making it easier for folks to say, I'm ready to work for KCS, I'm ready to make a difference in Knox County Schools. But additionally, we've been internally working through the process of thinking about how we sell the district as a place that you can be a part of a community and grow and thrive. And so, what does that look like from a messaging standpoint? What are the technical pieces behind that? How might you build some more of that digital infrastructure that allows us to tell that story, to do so in a fiscally responsible way, and also do so in a really targeted way? So, there's a lot of work kind of happening behind the scenes that you'll start to see slowly roll out from this month and on through June, and then we'll have a chance to kind of take a step back, see what works, make some tweaks, and continue to iterate over time about how we want to make sure that, again, if you want to work for KCS, if you're ready to make a difference in our schools, that we make it simple and easy for you to get plugged in, and that we have a process that supports folks in finding the right seat.
Are you continuing? Okay. Mr. Mosman, in particular with our custodial positions, where are some of the places that we're getting the word out to? Like, I know probably Indeed, right? But like, where are we trying to source custodians from?
It's a great question. I think right now what we're trying to figure out is what is the, are there issues with our process internally potentially? We are, are there places where we can tweak those things to make sure that we are getting folks who might be somewhere in our system that are ready to be in a custodial position or potentially eligible for custodial position, and then getting them connected to the right place? And so, it's kind of working inside out. We haven't yet launched sort of a more full scale of here's how we're going to connect folks, but do plan to launch some work in the coming months to make sure that we're embedded with more community-based organizations. That would be targeted at classified recruitment, which would include custodians.
Thank you. I feel like I should know the answer to this question, but I don't think I do. So, our starting pay at step zero is 1089 for this particular position. Can somebody bring in experience from another employer and already be bumped up that scale? Right? So, it's 1089 if you have no prior experience in the industry, but not with KCS, correct?
Can, correct. Can bring in up to five years of verified experience.
Okay. So, if you have previous experience at another employer, up to five years, you could jump up that scale from the start.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosman, I just want to say I love these. I think you gave them to every board member, right?
Yes.
And I have scanned the QR code. Is that the form you're talking about?
Yeah. Give me one second, I can tell if you submitted it.
Right. So, I do really like that. Dr. Ryswick.
Can I add one thing to that, too? Because I think the thinking behind it, we're always trying to talk about how do we make complex simple? Like, that's the role of administration and leadership, right? And I think what the neat thing about these, I think, can you talk about what happens once they're sent in and how that process goes? So, it's not just a, I think that's important, too.
Yeah. So, what we're trying to think about is, we know all of us have networks within Knox County community. How do we empower folks to be a part of helping us recruit staff and make that as easy as possible? So, if someone scans that code and they submit that form, that, there will be a form that pops up. You'll, I'll get an email, Clarence Saranger will get an email. That information populates into kind of a tracking spreadsheet that we use. The person also automatically then gets an email to schedule time to talk to Mr. Saranger, our district talent acquisition specialist. And then from there, we're working to make sure that we stay in contact with those folks and find the right seat. So, that's sort of the technical way in which we do that. What's nice is that, again, this is really simple. It's really easy for us to apply this same use case across lots of different places. And so, that form itself can be linked in digital advertising as well. And then we've got a system on the backend that helps us both track and convert candidates, but also analyze sort of what's happening. So, we've got a system to make sure that, you know, if you've submitted that interest, you've gotten a certain number of touch points that we're continuing to convert folks.
Can you look at the analytics in terms of where people are getting to this link from?
Not yet, but we will hopefully build on that.
Okay. And then here's just a comment, I'm on the form right now. To me, it's, I could be wrong, but just in my own hiring practices, race and ethnicity and gender seems premature on an interest form. Like, I mean, to me, I like, I know why we want that later to track demographics and all the things, but in terms of like, are you interested in working for KCS and are you white or Hispanic and female? For that to be upfront on the interest form, to me, seems a little premature. Can you talk, I'm sure you gave thought in terms of why you did that. Can you help us understand that part of it?
Yeah. We use it for exactly what you described, is to be able to track and understand sort of demographic trends within that interest form to make sure that we don't see disparities between the way in which we as KCS are converting those leads.
Is that something that historically, because this is new, right? This interest form, where was it tracked before? Was that within the application process?
Yeah. It's also tracking the application process as well.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, it's also tracking the application process. So, if they submit a formal application, they submit it there as well.
Definitely don't think we need to be in day-to-day management, but my thought is, like, if it's already tracked in the application, I don't know that I would track it on the interest form. It just seems too much, too quick when you're just trying to say, are you interested in working here? You're already asking personal questions before they've even shared interest. I don't know. To me, it just feel, it felt a little off when I saw that, just for whatever it's worth. Take it really. But I do love the approach, and I appreciate the work on the interest form, and would like to ask that we, if we, especially if we pass this contract, and even if we don't, that, Dr. Ryswick, that you give some kind of report out in a couple of months in terms of how the progress is going, so.
All right. Ms. Pike, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to propose a substitute motion to, instead of this contract with Duncan and Sons, to give a $200 monthly bonus to the current custodians and all future custodians for the time of February 1st to June 30, 2023. I have done the math on that, and this, that number would give us, within this contract, roughly in excess of up to $19,000 of wiggle room. I'm happy to explain my math. Would you like me to explain?
Can you, can you repeat it? Can you repeat your motion?
Yes. To, in lieu of this contract, to give all current custodians that are currently employed with KCS, $200 monthly bonus from February 1st to June 30th. And then also, all future custodians for that time period, as, and they also would get the $200 bonus. So, essentially, we have up to 383.7 full-time staff that would give them $200 every month for five months. And then, working within the $1,040,000 budget, that depending on what the hourly wage is of those extra hires that we are missing right now, that would potentially give us $19,000 of wiggle room.
Okay. So, we have a substitute motion by Ms. Pike, and a second by Ms. Owen. Reverend Butler, I believe you were next. Did you want to?
I guess I have a point of order. Do I, I was going to speak to the previous motion. This is a substitute motion. Am I going to speak to this now or wait?
You could speak to both.
I appreciate, well, I was going to say, I appreciate the point of order, Reverend Butler. At this point, you could comment on the substitute motion, and then if the substitute motion fails, then you could also comment on the original motion.
Okay. So, it's my choice. I'll go ahead and make my comments and question, and then it may have impact on this motion. My question, I think, may have been, maybe to Dr. Adams, if I remember how we talked about it Monday night, but how many, how many positions do we have vacant and how many do we have filled? Custodians.
So, we have a total of 392 positions available. Out of those 392 positions, we have 83 vacancies.
And so, the contract was proposed because currently with those 83 vacancies, the district cannot meet the standard of cleaning for the schools as, with the current vacancies. And that's the reason why I think you were proposing that the contract is being proposed. Is that correct?
And I do apologize, Madam Chair, Dr. Butler, that is correct.
So, the question I have, the question for me is, as I was going to ask earlier, in fact, what I was going to say was, my first job in the military was a combat medic. And Band-Aids were used after you get a shot. But when you were in a critical condition and losing blood, you used a tourniquet. And I think we are in tourniquet condition. So, this is a tourniquet and not a Band-Aid. And I'm not sure if the proposal of, and I do support what the proposal wants us to do, but I think right now, we have to stop the bleeding. And so, this contract, I don't see it as outsourcing. I see it as a stopgap, that we have to stop the bleeding. I see, what I understood from those who discussed on Monday night, the schools that have the worst shortages, the concern is keeping the custodians you have. If you could, even if you give them more money, they still are doing two jobs. If you have three people and seven people supposed to be there, then you got three people doing seven people's job. And if you give them more, $2 an hour, $200 a month, they still are doing more work, and they're not capable of doing that work. So, that's why I think that we have to have this contract, because it is a stopgap. That's the way I look at it. And I do think, I do have one other question, and I hope it's appropriate here, is that in the contract that has been presented, I see we're paying about $200,000 a month. How many positions do we, have we contracted for them to fill? Have we contracted them to fill all 83? So, what's the number?
No, sir. They have approximately 50 positions. They have approximately 50 positions.
So, we contract for 50 positions that they will fill. If they do not fill these positions, do we still pay them?
No, they have to fulfill their obligations.
So, we pay them for the positions that they fill? They fill 25, we pay them for 25?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dubler, but that would be a breach of contract if they did not fill the 50 positions?
Yes, yes, essentially. I mean, I'd have to look at the remedy, but I mean, yes, certainly that was the part of the, part of the bargain.
So, is there a deadline of filling the positions?
From the start date? All 50 positions?
Starting February 1st, they're supposed to fill 50 positions. And throughout the length of the contract, they would keep those 50 positions filled?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And that, that's the way they get paid?
Yes, sir.
Because that, so the feeling is, is that even though that'll leave 33 vacancies, we still would be able to meet the standards that are called for?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. I think that's all my questions in terms of this time.
And Madam Chair, Dr. Butler, I would be remiss if I don't say this. Knox County Schools gave a bonus of $1,000, and Lori can speak to that, and we were not able to retain or get additional applicants. The applicants that we did get, they took the $500 and they left. No one was able to get the $1,000. So, it attracted people for the duration of the bonus, basically. So, this is not a new proposal that Knox County School has done. This is something that we've done in the past, and just to be quite frank, it failed miserably.
When you say this is not a new proposal, you mean the proposal to give more money?
Yes, sir. That is, the bonus, that is correct.
Mr. Watson, or Mr. Dubler? Did you want to?
I just wanted to address Dr. Adams' question, Reverend Butler's question about rectifying any problems. We did talk about that a little bit on Monday night as well. In the main contract, it talks about any issues need to be resolved within 72 hours by communication, and if not resolved, then the contract could be terminated with 30 days' notice.
Thank you, Mr. Dubler. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think I agree with Mr. Butler, or Reverend Butler, that this is a tourniquet situation. I think that's much better language than what I use in terms of a Band-Aid. And I appreciate, Ms. Pike, what you're proposing and the intent of what you're proposing. And what I heard a lot from the other night on Monday was that also the existing employees have been overworked and worn out and all the things. So, I'm wondering what the thoughts would be about actually doing both and thanking those people who have been doing the deal, right? All year with short-staffed. And my math's a little bit different, so you're saying $200 a month for five months, that's $1,000 per employee, about 310 employees, that's 310,000. So, add that to this contract, you're talking, going to 1.5 million, basically, roughly, right? So, I'm wondering about a friendly amendment to your substitute motion, which is to do what you're suggesting, and then also fulfilling this contract, which to me would honor all the work that people have stepped up and done above and beyond, maybe a little bit of incentive for new ones, because your proposal was, people who get hired on between now and then, they would also get that extra $200, right?
I think the only thing with that, sorry to interrupt, is that the new hires would be under the contract. So, that would be?
We would still be hiring people directly, correct? KCS.
Okay. Then for them, yes.
Yes. So, for KCS employees, then yes. We're not talking about bonusing Duncan and Sons, right? So, the Duncan and Sons contract would stay as is, and that as a thank you for going above and beyond with a short labor force, and possibly as an incentive for new people, because they would get that $200 for the months that they were here if they jumped on. I think I would like to offer a friendly amendment to actually enact the contract and pay every current custodian $200 a month in extra pay between now and the end of the five-month period, as well as any new hires for KCS during that five-month period, which in my math, that's rough, it's less than 1.5 million for sure, so.
I would be in support of that.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I think it may be important to call that a bonus. We need to check with the Finance Department on that. Also, I'm not finding in the service agreement or in the contract where it says that we are guaranteed that specific number. There's a billing summary that has that specific number, but in the services, all it says is that contractor will provide professional and competent janitorial and related services to the client at the following locations. I don't see any guarantee of any number of persons. Can someone help me find that somewhere?
Dr. Adams?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, we have a breakdown, and Mr. Dubler can speak to the actual contract, but we have a breakdown per school, the staffing that Duncan and Sons has agreed to, which comes up for the total of the 50 employees. But as far as what's written in the contract and the agreement that we have and the breakdown of the supports per school, we do have that breakdown. So, Mr. Dubler, if you'd like to speak to the actual contract. But my understanding is that is tied into the contract, the number of people, the breakdown of schools, and the agreement we have with Duncan and Sons.
Well, thank you, yeah, Dr. Adams, Ms. Owen. Yes, it's my understanding that the way the contract is worded, it's per school. So, and it talks about, you know, each school talks about, you know, for instance, the one I'm looking at right now, Beard and Middle School, two full-time team members. So, it does talk about those issues. And frankly, what the contract with Duncan and Sons purports to do is to provide, you know, the high-quality cleaning at these certain schools for this certain price, for this certain square footage. So, if there's any dissatisfaction with that, Dr. Adams and his staff can, you know, express that dissatisfaction. express that dissatisfaction, have some communications in writing, email, and then get it rectified. And if not, then we could take action.
So looking at the billing summary, where it says prices reflected are estimated and will change based on actual start date, that I get. But seeing no guarantee of these numbers, and just that it says they will provide professional and competent janitorial and related services at those locations. It looks to me like, for example, at Northwest Middle, where it says they will provide four, if they only provide two, and we don't, we don't take any action to complain about that, then they could continue to just provide two, correct?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, the way that it's broken down, to your point, yes, it's broken down by person, and the dollars are tied to the people. And keep in mind that we will have an onsite head custodian who would report directly to their direct supervisor, which is Ms. Hall, if an employee is not present. And that, once again, would be, I would consider a breach of contracts, which would have to be rectified immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a point of order.
Yes.
Was the friendly amendment approved or accepted?
Ms. Pike accepted it. I think, who was, Ms. Owen was the second? Okay, yes, so you are accepting it as the second, right, Ms. Owen? Yes, okay. And, Dr. Isley, can we maybe, I don't know if you or Mr. McPherson just want to speak to that? And the language that, you know, would need to be used in the budget impact?
I would think, we'll get Ms. Himmelgarner, Mr. McPherson to come speak. I'd probably have Mr. McPherson come speak to that, if it's okay. Thanks.
Mr. McPherson can speak in far more specifics than I, but the thousand dollars wouldn't, the cost to the district wouldn't just be a thou, it would be more than, more than just a thousand dollars.
That's what I was saying, one point five, because, yeah, anyway. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so a thousand dollars, you would have to take into account applicable FICA and retirement on top of that. And so, again, this is kind of a back-of-the-envelope calculation. But if you apply that to our existing employee force, you're probably looking at north of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's just a rough estimate. And then the question would be, if additional hires along the way, you'd be, you know, you'd be adding that to it. That's including the thousand dollars, you're saying? That would be the, if it was a thousand dollar, I want to be careful not to call it a bonus. I mean, you know, because of tax implications and stuff. It depends on how we, believe it or not, it depends on how we categorize that. But, yeah, that would be with a thousand dollars, based on our existing employee force, which, you know, roughly maybe three-ten, that's going to vary, of course. And so that would, you know, that would be, before I think I hear the board saying, that would be in addition to the proposed contract here. So, excuse me, what we looked at is the amount of savings so far. And when I say savings, I'm talking about strictly employee turnover. So I'm just talking about strictly dollars, right? So the proposal was to take the amount, which was, I had to go back and look, but it was really close, actually, to somewhat comparison to what this contract was. So we were just going to redirect those dollars that had, that remained unspent into, you know, into this, into this contract, if the board approved it. That would be our mechanism or proposal for funding the, now an additional, additional amount that would go for bonuses, then, you know, we would, we would need to look in, you know, we would need to look in, you know, other places of the budget. Potentially, could that run the budget over with respect to the custodial line item? And if it could, it's just hard to say, there's still, you know, five more months to go into the year. You know, if that were to be the case, then we would, we would just need to go into another line item where potentially there are savings, and then redirect those dollars into that.
Thank you. And just, you know, just, I would like to know, I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I definitely think they have been doing, going above and beyond to do the job and obviously are exhausted and struggling to keep up. And I guess my only concern about doing it now, and I don't even know if I would call it a concern, but it is something I'm sitting here thinking about, is we have a lot of other employees in the same situation, right? I mean, we've got TAs, cafeteria workers. You know, I guess I had it in my mind that we would be addressing this in the budget, which we will start discussing soon. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm necessarily against it. I'm just trying to think of our other, you know, employees that might be in the same situation.
Ms. Henderson, I don't think you've spoken yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually, had my light on because I had the same concern. What kind of impact does that have on our other support staff, like our TAs, our food service workers who work really hard as well? And I'm not opposed to giving bonuses, but I would like to see it more well-thought-out in regards to those other staff. I know that some, some of the custodians work different hours than others. Would the bonus be the same for all of them, depending on what hours they? I just think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. And while I'm not opposed to it, I think that during the budget cycle would be the time that I would be more comfortable to address this.
I'm trying to see who is next here. I think it's you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McPherson, sorry, I actually had a question for you, and I know you already jumped back in your seat. So you are estimating that would roughly be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the bonus, and then any additional, any taxes that might be associated with it? Add that to the one million forty. You're a little less than one point four. So what I think I heard you saying is that when you all looked at the savings from unfilled positions that we've had up till now in this category, that it was close to that one million forty? That anything above that, you feel pretty confident would need to come from another source?
Well, I would answer it this way. I would literally have to go back and look and see what that number. I remember when we looked at that. Keep in mind, that was actually an estimate, too. Because what we did is we looked at, like, you know, the average custodial salary and the average vacancy rate at the end of each month, right? And then so we kind of, so we would, other than just going into every single employee that, you know, that was there. So that was an estimate as well. So I can't remember the exact dollar. It was definitely enough through the turnover, based on our estimated amount at that time, to redirect those dollars. We were comfortable in redirecting those dollars into this proposal. Any amount over and above that, there, I'm not saying there's not wiggle room. There could be. But we would, yes, the short answer is, is if that, if the, if the contract along with the personnel exceeded the custodial budget, then we would, obviously, we would need to go back into the budget and look at areas of savings and other areas to?
Yeah, so if this is budget-neutral, and then we approve this tonight, there's no issue. But if it's not budget-neutral, is it up to Central Administration to determine where it actually comes from, if it gets approved?
That, well, it would basically bear recommendations. So it would likely, what would happen is if we saw that were to start to go over, it would be included in the quarterly line item transfers that we bring before the board. And so the board, we provide those to the board, and we show the areas. Now, we do it by account number, but we show the areas where that would come from. And if the board had any question, obviously, what those account numbers, you know, related to, we could definitely, we would definitely answer that. But, yeah, it would be, probably be in the form of a, it would be within the other line item transfers that we submit.
Yeah, Ms. Christie and Ms. Henderson, I certainly understand your concerns. I didn't come tonight thinking I was going to make a friendly amendment like that. And I think I can be supportive of that amendment. I did offer it, but I'm also supportive of the original, of just passing the contract. I think my real concern is, if we do, if we take an action and do not install this contract, I think what we're going to find is in three or four months, we've got dirtier schools than we have now. I just, this is not a lack of faith in Ms. Himmelgarner and Ms. Mosman and all the things. I just do not think this issue is going to solve itself with our current, in our current mode. It's just not. And so we can either make the choice to try to do something to put a tourniquet, or we can watch it bleed out. And that's, I think that's probably what I'm more opposed to than anything else, so.
I would agree with that. Ms. Horn, you've not spoken yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think, I think, Mr. Watson, that's why, to me, this is two different things. We're talking about, we've combined something, but we're really talking about two different things. Because, as has been said, we have a problem that we need to solve. We also have a lot of hard-working folks that I think we all appreciate. And as Ms. Christie and Ms. Henderson have said, I feel the same way. I'm not opposed to showing appreciation at all. However, I would be concerned with doing that while not considering the big picture and considering the other staff members who are at that same pay scale. Because we have a lot of people who are working a lot of hours and working really hard. So I would agree. I think these are two different things that need to be, need to be looked at as two separate things.
Ms. Pike?
Can someone off the, like, off the top of their head, tell me what the pay scale is for a custodial supervisor? Is it different?
Madam Chair, Ms. Pike, our custodial salary schedule, we have three sections to the schedule. So one would be custodian, one is head, the second two are head custodian, depending on how many, how big the team is that they supervise in the building. So our, I think you all have heard, our custodial pay scale starts at ten eighty-nine and tops out at sixteen eighty-two. The B scale for head custodian for the smaller staff starts at eleven twenty-eight, goes to seventeen forty-nine. The C starts at twelve thirty-three and goes to nineteen oh seven. And then we have a dream team leader that goes up to nineteen eighty-four.
Okay, thank you so much. And my comment to that would be, is that I don't view these as two separate things, because these other staff, they're not looking at working with people who are potentially getting paid more per hour, while they've been doing the job and they absolutely need appreciation. I've worked, fifteen years ago, I worked at Starbucks, and I made seven dollars an hour. And when I had to train my manager, when I was making seven dollars an hour, that was miserable for me. And it didn't help me want to stay in that job. And I can only imagine that some of these head custodians are going to feel the same. And I think that if we are tourniqueting the situation, we also need to Band-Aid the other situation at the same time.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't perceive this as showing appreciation. I perceive this as helping our folks who are here to stay here. We need to not lose anymore. Earlier this year, we had twenty-eight positions, which were reorganized. And those twenty-eight saw raises that averaged ten thousand dollars each. We can do what we want to do. If we want to give our custodians appropriate pay, we can. It's a choice. And we need to very carefully consider the choices that we're making.
Mr. Triplet, I don't think you've had a chance to weigh in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that everybody loves, would love to support custodians, pay increase, all that would be great. I think, again, I agree with Ms. Horn, these are separate issues. I think that we vote on the contract and approve the contract, then we can take a look at finances and see if there's a line item available for us to make a transfer. But if this is pretty close to budget-neutral, then, you know, that's, that's all we've got. And if we have other resources available, then we take a look at that. I think we've talked and talked and talked and talked. I'd like to call for the vote, if I can get it.
Point of order. I've been waiting. I had the light on before anybody else. But because we had a amendment, and then we had a friendly amendment, I haven't had the chance to speak to the friendly amendment.
I mean, so according to Robert's rules, at this point, you know, once the vote's been called for and it's seconded, then the board would need to vote to call for the vote.
So, Ms. Coeney?
So this vote will be for calling for the vote on item nine B. Mr. Butler?
I vote no.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Pike? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn, would you like to change your pass vote? That's five yes votes and four no votes.
So that motion passes to call for the question. So we will be voting on the substitute motion.
So this is the substitute motion with the friendly amendment that was approved by Ms. Pike and Ms. Owen?
Right. Dr. Butler?
Okay, so we're voting on the friendly amendment.
This is the full substitute motion with the friendly amendment?
So it would be keep the contract and do the bonuses, is that correct, Mr. Watson, was that?
I do have a, I mean, I think it is important what we call it. And I think we need to be advised on whether or not we call this a bonus. I know Mr. McPherson just said that could be challenging. Is there preferred language from Central Office in terms of what this is called?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I will ask Mr. McPherson on the preferred language of bonus versus stipend or some other, something similar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so it really is basically how it's taxed on the front end, right? It's no more tax, it's taxed on the front end. So I think in times past, we've called it, I don't know if necessarily recommending this, but we've used words like incentive before.
What's the most advantageous for the employee?
You mean with respect to bonus versus not bonus? Well, so, so they're going to be taxed regardless, right, on the, by the federal government, right? It's just a matter of how much withholding on the front end, right? So advantageous is probably in the eye of the beholder. I just know that, you know?
What keeps more money in their pocket?
Initially not using the word bonus, but ultimately, it's still the same amount.
So incentive. I would, I would propose incentive for the?
So this, so what we are voting on would be to keep the contract, but also do an incentive of, was it two hundred dollars a month for?
For five months.
For five months, for existing custodians, as well as any?
New hires.
New hires to KCS, is that correct? Just for clarification. All right, so that is the motion we are voting on right now. Ms. Coeney, if you will do a roll call?
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Triplet?
No.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
No.
That's four yes votes and five no votes.
So motion fails. So now we are back to our original motion. Is that correct, Mr. Dupler? To approve the contract with Duncan and Sons?
Yes. And, well, yes.
Would you like to add anything to that?
I was just going to say, if there is additional discussion, technically, the call for the vote was for the other motion.
So we can still discuss this one?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Someone go to Reverend Butler.
Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. And quite honestly, it's not humorous to me, because my light was on before, a number of people's light was on before we started discussing the substitute motion or the amendment, friendly amendment to the substitute motion. So I think it was unfair for me not to be able to share. But now I have an opportunity to speak on this. I wanted to ask the question, again, just to make sure, because I understand that we have the contract provider saying they're going to provide a a certain amount of positions every month. If those positions are not fulfilled, then we will have an opportunity to bring attention to that. They will have 72 hours to correct that. And the second thing I wanted to say is, is that the analogy of a tourniquet is that you can only leave a tourniquet on for so long, and then it would no longer be effective. And so, this being a, something that we're using as a stopgap. If we, we are contracted through June, so we have to do something so that we don't have to do this in July. Because if we're doing this in July, it's no longer a tourniquet. Because whatever you put the tourniquet on to stop the bleeding, that's going to never, that's, that's going to be not usable anymore. So, I think it's important that we continue all of our efforts and even look at, look at even things that, that may be out of the box so that we can make sure that we have custodial staff, that we're not, we're not using a contract to fulfill.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Adams, on Monday, I had asked you the question about, do they have to hire these folks or do they already have them? And you said they could start February 1st. Is, I, I don't, I feel like I'm pretty detailed, but Ms. Owen, like, kills me on that. Like, she's just incredibly detailed. I do think, after her raising that point, I, I do have a little bit of a concern to, in terms of the contract and them having to fulfill that obligation. When you answered that on Monday, is that based on conversations that you've had with management there, that they already have them on staff? Or, because there's nothing in the contract that obviously that states that, so.
Yeah, and I'll certainly, and, and I've met with Duncan and Sons and Lori has met with them and a great deal. I'll have Lori come up and speak. But when we looked and assessed the schools, and keep in mind, they've walked several of these schools.
Sure.
They said that they had those employees ready to start at those schools. So, I'll let Lori speak to that.
Thank you.
As she went to the planning portion.
The conversation that I've had with Duncan and Sons is that they currently have 300-plus or minus custodians on staff currently. Their plan is to pull from some of their seasoned custodians at other places and create teams combined with new hires. I don't know what that ratio is going to be. I don't know what they're looking to hire for Knox County Schools specifically. But they have assured me that, that they can have the 50 people February 1st.
Okay. Thank you. So, from your understanding, there probably is some level of hiring they have to do between now and then, it sounds like.
Whether it be to place custodians at Knox County Schools.
Or, or maybe feel something that they're pulling somebody off of.
Right, right. I don't know exactly what that number is.
Yeah. Right. And we, and we don't need to be in that level of detail in their business. I get that.
Right.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. So, we have a call for the question in a second.
Point of order?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan, I don't believe you're light on nor were you called on, were you?
You don't have to.
Can, can you just shout that? I mean, I don't know. Well, rock and roll, I'm going to start shouting.
Okay, so we, all right. Thank you, Ms. Horn. So, we will do another roll call vote on calling for the question. Ms. Courtney?
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Bike, would you like to change your vote? That's seven yes, oh, eight yes votes and one pass.
All right. So, motion carries. So, now we will be back to the original motion of approving the contract with Duncan and Sons. And let's do a roll call vote on this as well. Ms. Courtney?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote? That is seven yes votes, one no vote, and one pass.
So, motion carries.
Item 9C, approve contracts with Harmony Family Center and McNabb Center for student telehealth services up to $150,000 per year for the term of February 1, 2023, through January 31, 2024, which may be renewed for one additional year.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, Reverend Butler, your light is on, I believe. Is that, okay, that's okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve contract with International Institute for Restorative Practices. For restorative practices, professional development, materials, and support, up to $403,000 for a two-year term.
So, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A was withdrawn. 10B, approve schematic design of addition to Harden Valley Academy by Cope Architecture.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10C, approve schematic design of addition and renovations to Sturkey Elementary School by Lewis Group Architects.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10D, approve resolution of the Knox County Board of Education to surplus Ami Hill School.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So, we have eight yes, one no. Motion carries.
10E, approve fund balance designation in the amount of $414,740 for educational, instructional, and other supplies and materials for the new Northwest Sector Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10F, approve preschool curriculum adoption committee appointments.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10G, approve tenure for eligible teachers.
Motion by Reverend Butler and a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10H?
So, before we go to 10H, just want to ask board members a question. I don't know, not knowing how long this discussion will take. So, before we get the motion on the floor, is anybody opposed to maybe a five-minute break? So, everybody good with that? Five to 10 minutes, then we'll come back.
All right, we are back for the last item on our agenda. Ms. Cottney?
Approved 2023 legislative priorities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on our discussion from Monday, first I want to remind our board that these are legislative priorities and they are not the same as a list of position statements. So when we are putting our priorities together, what we have discussed in the past is the importance of keeping them as concise as possible. And I'll tell you, the version you have in front of you, that's three pages, is the exact same thing that you had attached to the agenda. The only reason it's three pages is due to a printer problem. So I just bolded everything to make it clear enough that we could read it. And when that happened, of course, it made it bigger and it kicked it to three pages. So when I put that back into its normal font, it'll all be back on two pages, just like it is attached to the agenda. So that said, what we've discussed in the past is that when we take these to our legislators, we want to have it as concise as possible so that they're not flipping through trying to figure out what it is that Knox County Schools wants. So in the past, we have gone with a front and back that they can very easily look at. I would much rather have it all on one front page so that they could just see it all in one look. But there was some discussion about making the larger font and going a little larger. So there are some other large counties who have multiple pages, to the point of having a booklet of legislative priorities. And that seems very difficult for legislators to keep up with. So keeping it as small as possible, I think, is important. The place where we have gone larger, we've tried to put bullet points to make that as clear as possible. In this version, here's what I have added from Monday. If you go under academic and retention decisions in the very last paragraph, we discussed including appropriate, and I think we said data-based, which is difficult. I changed that to evidence-based. And if anyone has an objection to that, I'm glad to go back to data. But appropriate, evidence-based teacher training and materials for reading and literacy instruction. There was some discussion around whether to include the language science of reading, and it was my understanding that we were not going to include that. I'd like to go a little bit further with that discussion because it kind of applies to everything. That's a term that has, it means different things to different people. To some people, when we hear that science of reading, we think what we're talking about is evidence-based. We think what we're talking about is reading that is based in science. However, there are some groups who don't read it that way. They read that as a formula that is very scripted, that is very exact, and that doesn't give teachers the ability to do what's necessary for students necessarily. So if we have something like that, that looks very clear-cut and obvious to two different groups of people as being two very different things, I think we need to do what we can to avoid that confusion because it's not saying the same things to everyone. I have also tried to remove anything that might be a political hot-button phrase. We need to remember that when we carry these, we are taking them to people of all parties. And so we don't want to have something that is going to get stuck somewhere and be offensive to our legislators when we are trying to get them to work together to work for schools. So that is important also. The next thing I included here is the TANF language, and it is the language from TSBA. I took out the reference to TSBA and changed that to Knox County Board of Education. Under funding for public education, we removed all the sub-bullet points and all references to BEP. We also removed the source information there about numbers. And so the top bullet, continued investments in school nurses, counselors, social workers, and mental health professionals, is what I came down to. The next large change is at the bottom of that page, under review and correct unnecessary requirements. If you'll take a look at that, that's also TSBA's language. And that first paragraph is what came from TSBA with the change of Knox County Schools in place of TSBA. I left in the paragraph we had before about burdensome processes and procedures. We may feel that that is, that's too wordy there, so I'd be glad to cut that down some more if anyone likes. The next point on the third page, which will actually bump back up and be on the second page, is transparency. The Knox County Board of Education supports the efforts of the General Assembly to empower parents through transparency by clarifying the rights of parents regarding their child's education. I think transparency is something we have discussed repeatedly, and I don't know of any objection to that that anyone has brought up. So you want to have any questions about any of those?
What?
Oh, it says 2022. Well, all right, we'll fix that one. Thank you. Do you see anything that needs to be removed in any of that?
Ms. Henderson, did you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a couple of things I would like to see added on. I did provide them as amendments. We can just vote on them individually. I did take off, I will take off the transparency since it is included in the document. But I would like to see a more robust item on literacy instruction. And I did supply that along with the definition of science of reading on there. And I may ask Erin Phillips, Dr. Phillips, to come up and speak on that a little bit. What I did have, just so, because not everyone has the document, "The Knox County Board of Education believes that phonics is fundamental for children to learn to read. The Knox County Board of Education urges the state legislative bodies to continue to support the science of reading through teacher trainings and materials for literacy instruction. The science of reading is defined as a body of research that incorporates insights and research from disciplines that include developmental psychology, educational psychology, cognitive science, and cognitive neuroscience. The science of reading has demonstrated the methods that best help children learn to read, from the earliest steps in spoken language to being able to successfully decode unfamiliar words." I think that we're at a turning point in literacy. It is in the spotlight locally, in the spotlight at the state level, and nationally. I think if a person can't read, they don't have the freedom to take advantage of every opportunity that this country has to offer. And I'm not pretending to be an expert in literacy, but what I am required to do as a policymaker is be able to fight for effective teacher trainings and make sure that our kids have what they need to be able to read well. So Erin, can you speak to a little bit about the science of reading, if you don't mind? And do you think that this is important?
Sure. So the science of reading is convergence of research that talks about what the elements are that lead to effective literacy instruction. And so one of the simplest ways to look at that is a simple equation, which is referred to as a simple view of reading, which is taking language comprehension multiplied by decoding, and that equates to reading comprehension. And so if we associate that with Scarborough's rope, which is something that's often referred to when we talk about the science of reading, there are essentially two ends to that rope. The bottom end of that rope is about word recognition. And so when we teach students to recognize words, that's when we're using explicit direct instruction around phonological awareness, which I spoke about on Monday, which is that big umbrella. We break it down to the phoneme level, which is the smallest unit of sound in the language. We're also teaching students how to blend sounds together with explicit instruction and how to build their fluency capacity. And so we're also teaching sight word recognition as part of that word recognition part of the rope. That bottom part of the rope is what we hope and what we strive for in all of our explicit direct instruction, for students to master. Those are what we refer to as constrained skills. So in order to effectively employ those skills, you have to master them. The top part of Scarborough's rope is referred to from the language comprehension side of things. That's when we look at things like vocabulary, building up our knowledge of how do words speak to the meaning part of language. And so we're looking carefully at the elements of reading comprehension. When we think about literacy as an all-encompassing thing, you can also refer to the Tennessee Academic Standards to get a picture of what that looks like. So our Tennessee Academic Standards call for literate students to have foundational literacy instruction. So we have that FL code in our standards that speaks to foundational literacy. We have speaking and listening standards. So we want to build literate students who are well-spoken and have the ability to listen well and comprehend what they're listening to. We also have reading standards, so the ability to engage with complex text and make meaning from those texts. And then we have writing standards. So how do we convey meaning in how we have written communication?
Thank you. And I know that the state passed a literacy package recently. And so for me, this supports what the state is doing. It supports one of our superintendent's main priorities. And so, and I also look at the legislative priorities. I look at this document as something that embodies what this board deems important, but also the values of Knox County. I think that this should always be a working document. I think it should be a changing document. I would love to see at the end of the year, what did we accomplish on our legislative priorities? What went well? What didn't go well? I would just love to see this document kind of grow from where it is. And I would like to bring this up as, I'm going to make a motion to add this because I just think it's important to add literacy to this, especially since the state is focusing on this and our superintendent is focusing on this in his priorities. Thank you, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, I appreciate you adding, under, I'm looking at the section under funding public education, and I appreciate you adding the point about their recent attention to funding the needs and et cetera. However, I, after our conversation on Monday, and just really kind of the way it hit me to continue to include this section on the legislative priorities, I think that they've addressed this in such a big way last year. I don't think they're going to come back and do anything this year. So to Ms. Henderson's point about this being a living document, it doesn't mean that we won't need to come back and add something next year, but they're not going to add anything, I don't think they're going to add anything this year. They've added $1 billion to education, an additional 52 to 54 million dollars for KCS. I don't think that, I'm not sure that including this at this point will add to our credibility with the legislature. So that, I would like to hear from some other board members, but that's my feeling on it. That was my gut feeling on Monday. And I, and as I've thought about it this week, I just, that's, that is kind of my position. So I think if we need to create some space on this document, I would be in favor of deleting that. And I don't, you know, we can revisit it next year to see if we need to add anything back in.
The reason I feel strongly about keeping it in is because they are still in rulemaking. And rulemaking is where, where much of the funding decisions will be made about where to put different pieces of those funding formulas. So my concern is that the Department of Education during rulemaking could make adjustments there. And we need to be sure that our legislature is keeping an eye on that, I guess, so that we continue with these expectations.
Perhaps we need to adjust the language then to reflect that even more. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, but I see your point. I'm just concerned that, that it's going to appear like we don't think they've heard us in the past.
Okay.
So.
I'm thinking about the Finance Committee, Finance Ways and Means. And they had great reservations about moving forward with it.
reservations about moving forward with it. However, they talked a lot about being able to make adjustments during this session. So I, I really feel like we need to keep this in front of them to be sure that they are, are making those considerations as they're making adjustments to law.
Just, just to speak a little bit to what you are saying, Ms. Horn, I do think that it can be problematic if what we send doesn't recognize what's already been done, I guess, and that might be what you're trying to say, right? I don't want it to give the appearance of, well, Knox County doesn't even know that we dedicate it.
Right.
Could we take the last sentence in the top paragraph and move it to the top of the paragraph? Would that help if the appreciation for their recent attention to funding needs began that section?
Or maybe even, I mean, the headline is Funding for Public Education. I think we're, I think we might ought to speak more about TESA, you know, its specific rulemaking around TESA. So perhaps something that is more targeted to what your point is about where dollars are allocated.
My concern would be in getting that completed before we have our, our lunch with legislators.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'd like to hear from some other board members about what, about your thoughts about this section in general.
And I'll also add, I mean, I, I don't feel all that strongly about adding another page if we need to. I mean, that's not a hard line in the sand for me. I mean, if it comes to that and we need to add another page, I'm okay with that.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this sounds really great, and I, and the amendment too, and I agree that this should be a living document. I maybe would just like some more clarity on, like, it seems like a lot of this is, you know, asking for things and asking for intention, and I'm not really sure exactly what this is asking for, and then also what Knox County might, where the gaps for Knox County would be that this would help fill. Does that make sense?
The Second Amendment or the literacy?
Yeah.
In my mind, the legislative priorities, and I'm not going to speak to Steve's amendments, but they kind of go along with parental transparency. To me, the legislative priorities is a document, and we always ask, 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 but we also need to show, hey, this is what we value for our students. This is what we value for Knox County, and this is what we value in education. And these are our priorities, and so that's where I'm coming from with those. These are statements of this is what's important to us.
So just more clarity on that. Is there any sort, so it's just a statement of these are where our values are? There isn't an ask there of legislature or for anything for us?
Just that, so the state passed a literacy package last year, RE360, that's based, that's phonics-based, and so it just supports their work that they're doing to make sure that our students are ready for a world after graduation.
Okay.
I think the purpose of this document is to ask, ask, ask. That's, that's, that's what it's for. It's to go to our legislators and say, this is what we want, this is what we need. It's supposed to be an ask, ask, ask document. It's supposed to let them know, here is, here are our needs. I think if we want to, if we want to express appreciation when they have created something, that's something we might want to do through resolution, because this is what we are, these are our asks for this session, or, well, for this half of the session. So.
So is it legislative asks or legislative priorities? I think it's a balance.
Sometimes they're called legislative agendas, sometimes they're called priorities, but this, these are our priorities for what we want our legislators to do.
So we don't value reading or supporting the state in those efforts? I just think there's a balance.
I think you're talking about a position statement instead of a legislative.
It's a priority for Knox County. And we can vote on it, it either will pass or not pass. That's why I'm just bringing it to the board, and I'll do whatever, you know, obviously it's the board's will. But I think it's a ba, it should be a balanced document and a working document.
Is there an ask we can put with this? I mean, it seems like there are needs with reading, I mean, obviously, that's been the big topic.
We need to, I think, Mr. Watson, I believe you are next up here, or you haven't spoken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to again, appreciate all the work that's gone into this and appreciate, appreciate those that brought ideas and suggestions to the table. I think it's important that whenever we're communicating the desires for Knox County Schools, that we're also conscious of the changing landscape that Knox County Schools resides in. And I think that speaks to some of what Ms. Horn is saying, that I know since I came on the board, there was something very similar around funding the whole time, and then, you know, TESA happened, and some people love it, some people hate it, and probably nobody's completely happy, right? But then there's also, I, to me, in some ways, I, Ms. Henderson, I understand what you're saying, but I think the literacy instruction falls in the same category in that, like you just said, they passed literacy, the, 360, what's the full name?
RE360.
Yeah, RE360, right? So I guess what I'm, I know this is probably throwing a wrench in it, and I'm not suggesting that we do this and take all this time, but I do think it's important for us in the future as we're, as we're drafting this, is to, is to maybe maximize the use of this, where we are really trying to push the envelope on things that have not been addressed. To me, to, to spend the time to reaffirm in legislative priorities or legislative agenda things that have already been done, I'm not sure that's the best use of, of this tool and this opportunity to be in the ears of our legislators. And I do think there's a lot of ways to, to acknowledge them, and I appreciate your comments around balance. I mean, I don't want our legislators to think that we don't appreciate them, but I think, as you said, this is a living document, and I think it should acknowledge the changing landscape. And so to me, if, if any year, we're just putting things on there that have already been done and already been addressed and tackled, I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's really honoring the intent of what a legislative priority list should be, that it, because the reality is, we're never going to get completely what we feel like we need for Knox County Schools. That's just not the nature of the beast, right? And so there's always something new to try to push for. And to me, I think that's probably where the best use of this tool is, is to really dig in and say, well, what are those things that we need to be pushing for? Not that I don't want to thank people for the things that they've done, I just think there's probably other avenues to do that. So in some ways, I, I kind of feel the Funding for Public Education section, the way it's worded, I, I completely understand Ms. Horn's concerns about rules, but I don't think it's worded to really make that statement. I think it does more drift into what Ms. Horn was saying, that it's, it's kind of restating things that have been addressed, and also the literacy instruction. I think both those things kind of fall into those categories of things the legislature's tackled, and we probably should move on to it and figure out where are the next things that Knox County Schools needs.
Mr. Triplett?
I, I agree with the living, breathing. I think that, you know, maybe in, you know, Amendment Three and Amendment Four are things they've tackled recently, and, and in the following year, you, you don't bring those up again, but it's something they've tackled recently and something we support, and, you know, want them to know there's a group of people in East Tennessee that support those things, so we vote to add them on, and then next year, we, we take them off. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be the same set of things every year, but we add them for now and say, hey, we support some of the decisions you made around literacy and some of these things, and then, you know, maybe we change the wording related to funding for public education to lend some support to some decisions that they've made, and then, you know, next year, those things come off, and maybe there's some specific asks around literacy, around funding that we want. And so I, I, I agree that you don't want to, I don't want it to be all ask, and I certainly don't want it to be all thank you very much and applaud, there are some things we need, but I think when there are decisions that are made that we value, I, I would like to see those included, just for one year, to, to, to bring support to those things, and then let them know kind of, hey, you know, you made some right decisions, and we appreciate that, we support that, we want you to continue in that direction, and then the following year, those can be, those can be moved off. And when I look at years' previous documents, this just doesn't really change. It's almost like a repeat in a lot of ways, which I, I understand some of it is, it needs to be a repeat, but I think this is a way to say, hey, we support some decisions you made, continue in that direction. The next year, those can kind of come off, and we can move in, in other directions as well.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the paragraph on page one, under the academic retention decisions, if we added language that said, if we added from the Tennessee Standards, in the last line, "materials for reading and foundational literacy and comprehension skills," would that cover, adding that to the language we added before, would that cover it?
So you're saying adding that in place of?
No, in addition to evidence-based teacher training and materials for reading and foundational literacy instruction and skills.
I would like to see a more robust definition, so I would rather see it as how I've written it.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a suggestion. It sounds like maybe what, what we need is perhaps we could have, in the final section of this document, whether it's on page two or a page three, which it looks like it might be a page three, that it has kind of a separate section that says Knox County Board of Education appreciates and supports, and then list these four amendments. So it's acknowledging that they've already been, they've already been addressed, and we appreciate and support those. So that's kind of what it sounds like to me that would be clear, because, and, and it does, the title of this, it does say priorities, so it doesn't say agenda, it says priorities. So that demonstrates that this, these would be priorities. So, and, and even then, as a, as an aside to that, whether we list the funding piece with that, and then can, and then list it basically how it is, or then I, the other suggestion that I would have for the Funding for Public Education is perhaps just change the title to TESA Funding or something of that nature, delete the first sentence and say, "The Board of Education appreciates our, Knox County Board of Education appreciates our legislators' recent attention to funding needs and urges the General Assembly to ensure TESA includes," and then have the list, so that it is an acknowledgement of, just basically a, we understand where we are, and here's what we'd like to see.
I like that idea, and I like the organization of it, where it's kind of separate a little bit, where it's like, here's what we're asking for, here's what we'd like to see, and here's what we appreciate, and these are the values of, you know, our area and our county. So I, I like that idea.
Are you saying to remove the transparency piece and put that in a separate section?
Yes. Then we, we could delete that piece and have, and use the language, whatever, whatever, Ms., let's see, Amendment One, parents are best equipped, yeah, so.
Yeah.
And, and that basically restates what the legislature has already done. So yes, I would say delete that transparency title.
Yeah, and then put it in the new section where we're acknowledging what has been done and appreciate what the legislature has already done in the state.
So, did we have a, did we have a motion?
We only to, to discuss this document, she said that she would.
To discuss it.
Right, that she would be asking for an amendment that has not asked for one.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, well then, I, I mean, do. I don't know who has the floor.
I'm wondering, in the, here's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that no, no one in the public has seen these, so they haven't had an opportunity to discuss them with us. Should we add them next month as an amendment to that? So that we can discuss them further, or should we keep going?
Go ahead. I mean, I know my district, these are the things that people are coming to me with every day, so.
Well, and some of these, I think, were probably in some of our campaign material, those, that recently ran. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Horn, I do like your suggestion of reorganizing the document, and I think it, I think it makes it more clear when the, and I, I think it more, makes it more clear when legislator's looking at it, that they see, okay, here's their ask, and here's the things they're grateful for, and I think that has a better flow of it, instead of mixing it in between. And I, and I do think the, it does help removing that first sentence from the Funding for Public Education. I'm fine recalling it, TESA Funding, but really highlighting that those are the things we want addressed in the rules, and that is an ask, that is something that's still in process. So I think that's important to probably try to include, so I appreciate your suggestion of, of reorganizing.
Thank you. So, Ms. Horn, or Mr. Triplett, I'm sorry.
So then, can we make a motion then?
Yeah.
You got it, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to make the following adjustments to this document. Change the title for Funding for Public Education to TESA Funding, and delete the first sentence in that section. Then delete the transparency section altogether. Add a new title to the last section called Knox County Board of Education Appreciates and Supports. And then add Amendment One, Amendment Two, Amendment Three, and Amendment Four as presented by Ms. Henderson and Mr. Triplett.
So we have a substitute motion to change the heading of Funding for Public Education, right, to, to TESA Funding. Delete the first six sentence, delete the first sentence, and leave the rest, and then delete the section on transparency, but add the language and a new heading of Knox County Board of Education Appreciates and Supports.
And list the four amendments.
Okay, and list the four amendments that board members have. So discussion on that. Ms. Owen?
I'm good with all of that until we get down to adding these four without any input from the public or from our teachers. I know there's a great deal of concern over the classroom libraries that are having to be gone through right now. It, it seems hypocritical to me to talk about transparency and then add supporting these things without giving any opportunity for the public to comment on any of these things. So that's, that's the concern I would have with adding that additional page.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a challenge with voting on this with all four amendment, amendments automatically included. I, I do think three and four are hot-button issues, and I do think there are large swaths of our community that certainly support what the legislature did with both of those issues. But I also know that there's some, I think, unintentional messages that are being sent. The reality is, we do have students in our community who are transgender, and depending on, I don't think it necessarily matters what we view about that personally, that is the way they identify. And when the legislature does certain things that it did, whether or not it felt like it was in the right to do that, it does send a message to our community in terms of their value. In terms of Amendment Four, I actually don't like the way that they handled what they did. I'm not, I'm certainly not an advocate for explicit content in our elementary libraries, but the reality is, there was already ways to handle. but the reality is, there was already ways to handle that, they were established. And I think both of those were culture war issues, that where problems were trying to be addressed that maybe weren't problems. And so I would offer a friendly amendment to the motion, and that is that we vote on the amendments themselves separately to be added.
So we vote for the document first? And then we just vote for Amendment One, Amendment Two, Amendment Three? We had one at a time? One at a time? So we vote, so the motion, your motion, Mr. Watson, is to vote for the document first with removing transparency and with the removal of the suggestion? And then a vote for Amendment One, Amendment Two, Amendment Three, Amendment Four, separate? And so one and four may make it, and two or three, whatever it is.
Okay.
I'm content with that.
So Ms. Horn and Ms. Henderson are okay with that friendly amendment?
Yes.
So Ms. Bike?
Oh, that was from before, sorry.
Okay. So, we are going to vote on the original, the only, so the only issue is, when you talk about the section, I guess, on transparency. I mean, if we make that amendment, and then that doesn't, right, then we, it's deleted, so...
Yeah, that's, I think that's fair.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. All right. So we will vote on the document itself first, is this correct, Mr. Dupler? Are we?
The board, the, the will of the board here, you know, but I'm just trying to make sure we're on the right track. Is the board then okay with the, with the other corrections that Ms. Horn suggested, and you're just voting on the four additions?
With her suggestions, yes.
Okay. All right. Just making sure we're, we're good.
So we're voting on the...
So that, so that when somebody looks at this, you know, on down the road...
Right. So we're voting on the document with the change to the funding, that the change to TESA funding and deleting the first sentence, and adding a last section, which may or may not have, right, deleting transparency, and then adding that last section, just to be clear.
I think we're... We're also, we're correcting the 2022 in the first sentence at the top. Are we adding foundational to literacy instruction, or no?
Well, if it's in, it's in here, so...
I think it's not.
I mean, we would vote on that amendment separately. Are you saying, okay, here's my question. If we updated that to what you said with the foundational literacy and skills, and then we'll be voting on this, it would be added for something that the state has already done, and we support?
This one is, this one is to continue, this one has two, two pieces to it. Part of it is the academic and retention decisions...
Correct.
And local control.
Yeah.
So the full, the full paragraph says, "Districts must continue to have flexibility to adopt instructional and supplemental materials in partnership with teachers and with families, including appropriate evidence-based teacher training and materials for reading and foundational literacy instruction and skills." So do you want to keep that foundational and skills in there?
Yeah, yeah, and then vote on this, just because I think those two things work together, the retention and the foundational literacy and comprehension. Thank you.
Changing the funding for public, public education just to the heading of TESA, should it say TESA and funding, since TESA is a formula and... So just TESA and funding, TESA slash funding? And take out the first sentence there? And delete the transparency section? And there were no other deletions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
All right. Ms. Cottney?
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's eight yes votes? I apologize, that's non yes votes.
That's getting my... So motion carries? So, point of order, Mr. Dupler, would it be best, I guess, for someone to make a motion to add an amendment, piece by piece, or? That's already, okay, so going on, so we're just gonna go down the roll, okay? So Ms. Cottney, we are now on Amendment One.
Dr. Butler?
You want me to read the amendment?
Or do you have, do you have amendment? I don't care, I, I can, I'll mark this one.
Since these are, shall we call them amendments, or shall we just call them by their, by their title?
I would say in the document, by their title, right?
Right, so should we vote on them that way, too?
Yeah, we, we should. So, the first thing we will be voting on is adding parental transparency, which the language is, "Parents are best equipped and informed to know their children and make decisions regarding their needs and challenges. The Knox County Board of Education supports the efforts of the state legislative bodies to clarify the rights and empower parents in their child's education." Ms. Cottney?
Dr. Butler?
Pass.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote?
No.
Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote? That is seven yes votes and two pass votes.
So motion carries. The next topic would be literacy instruction, and the language is, "The Knox County Board of Education believes that phonics is fundamental for children to learn to read. The Knox County Board of Education urges the state legislative bodies to continue to support the science of reading through teacher trainings and materials for literacy instruction. The science of reading is defined as a body of research that incorporates insights and research from disciplines that include developmental psychology, educational psychology, cognitive science, and cognitive neuroscience. The science of reading has demonstrated the methods that best help children learn to read, from the earliest steps in spoken language to being able to successfully decode unfamiliar words."
Ms. Dr. Butler?
Pass.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Pass.
Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote?
No.
Ms. Bike? That is six yes votes, one no vote, and two pass votes.
So motion carries. The next section, we do not have a heading for this, it just says Amendment Three.
Whatever you want to call it.
What, what, did you say? Support for women's sports? And the wording in that is, "We support the legislature's efforts to protect women's sports, ensuring that young women in Knox County have the opportunity to compete and succeed."
Dr. Butler?
Pass.
Ms. Owen?
Pass.
Mr. Watson?
No.
Ms. Bike?
No.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote?
No.
Ms. Owen? Now, that's five yes votes, two no votes, and two pass votes.
So motion carries. So Ms., I'm sorry. Parental rights, is, you want to, okay. So, the last one will...
Like curriculum, or...
Age-appropriate curriculum?
Yeah, yeah.
Or age-appropriate materials in classroom? Age-appropriate materials in classrooms? So, the last one will be age-appropriate materials in classrooms, and language on that is, "We support the legislature's effort to prohibit explicit content from elementary school libraries to protect young children and ensure parental rights."
Dr. Butler?
Pass.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Owen? That's five yes votes, two no votes, and two pass votes.
All right, so motion carries. So moving on to public forum, Ms. Henderson?
Madam Chair, we have one public speaker signed up, Mandy Hargis. Welcome. You have three minutes, please state your name and county of residence.
My name is Mandy Hargis, Knox County resident. I am the mother of a seventh grade student at Hardin Valley Middle School. At the end of last school year, I became aware of the requirements for students to make honor roll, and based on my own child's experience and what I was hearing from other parents at this school, I began advocating to have this policy changed. I initially reached out to Principal Cory Smith in May of 2022 regarding this policy, and was denied the opportunity to address the group of staff at the school who make decisions concerning, concerning such policies. I was later informed that this group declined to make any change. At that time, in August of 2022, it was suggested that I reach out to my local representatives for further advice and assistance. In an effort to save time, I will say that at some point in my journey to advocate for change, I have reached out to the following individuals for assistance: Florence Nady, Region Two Supervisor Nate Leganos, District Six Board Member Betsy Henderson, Superintendent John Reiswick, and then subsequently each and every board member in this room. None of these interactions have been positive or resulted in any action to help create change for students at Hardin Valley Middle School. Furthermore, I have been told that Principal Smith has autonomy, and that no one is willing to review or overrule his policy and advocate for the students at this school. Despite bringing to the attention of each and every one of you that Knox County School District's policy I-310, titled "Reporting Student Progress," is woefully inadequate, and that the county locks a policy regarding honor roll at both, at all, both of which directly affect the Hardin Valley policy, no positive change has been made. Indeed, the proposed changes to I-310, which were voted on last month, merely condone and promote the unfair policy of Hardin Valley Middle School, and completely ignore the deficiencies in which I have previously brought to your attention. Finally, I want to say that I am incredibly frustrated and disappointed, not only with the fact that I have to contact so many people and jump through so many hoops to advocate for my child and all of the students at Hardin Valley Middle School, but also in the quality of the interactions I have had. I have been passed from one person to another, and not a single one of you has been willing to do anything about the policies I brought to your attention. Additionally, the issues that other parents and I have with the honor roll policy should have been able to be addressed in a positive, mutually agreeable outcome at the school level. The fact that I have been forced to address you all tonight only shows me that this board is more interested in the politics and not in the best interest of our children. You should all be very ashamed of yourselves. Good night.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Meeting is adjourned.